About a variety of issues to join our organization. Just go to LWVABCBN.org to learn more about the League. This Meet the Candidate Forum is about informing voters. It's held to provide voters an opportunity to hear from candidates on important issues and compare their ideas. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. The League posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. To begin the forum, the candidates will answer two introductory questions they received in advance, followed by questions that were submitted by the public via our website, and then we'll end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for the two introductory questions and one minute for each of the other questions and closing statements. So at this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for Anoka County Commissioner, District Five, and welcome, and thank you both for participating in this forum. Numbers were drawn to determine which candidate will begin, and then we'll rotate with each person being the first to answer the questions. And then for closing statements, we'll go in reverse order. So the numbers were drawn. We'll begin with you, candidate Strombeck.
Thank you, Leslie.
What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you. My name is Tracy Strombeck. I want to, I am not a politician, and I'm a fresh new voice running to be your next county commissioner. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I would also like to thank Metro North TV for allowing us to use their facility for this forum. I have grown up in Anoka County and have lived in Andover for 50 years. I have been married for 28 years and have three grown children. My husband and I are small business owners since 2004 in the city of Ramsey, and we have 18 employees. I am currently in my second term as a Park and Rec Commissioner for the city of Andover. I previously served as a park liaison on the YMCA ACC Advisory Commission. I am also a head election judge at both city and county levels. I'm a past booster president for eight years and have been a community volunteer for over 15 years. My motivation is to have my views represented on the commission and to give people a choice that represents their position and values. Elected officials should always stand firmly in support of our constitutional rights. I'm a strong believer in constitutional rights and will make sure they are upheld. My opponent voted against a resolution that declared Anoka County will support, uphold, and defend all constitutional rights of our citizens on May 26th of 2020. Another motivating factor for me is to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars while always maintaining a fiscally conservative position, not just during the election season. My experience working in local government and understanding processes and procedures and how it functions will help me transition my knowledge smoothly and seamlessly to the county board.
Thank you, candidate Strombeck. And candidate Mike Gamash, what is your motivate, motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to North Metro TV as well. I'm really proud of the accomplishments that we have had over the last eight years on the Board of Directors for Anoka County. It has been a great honor to represent the people of Anoka County. I'm very proud that to, that we have been able to hold our county levy steady with no increase for the last three years, and we did that right up to passing our most recent levy for 2023. It will be the same as last year with no increase. I'm also very proud of the fact that serving as the Chair of the Parks Committee since 2019, I was able to help make sure the Chamonix Golf Course went from a little trouble where we were making, we're not making as much money as we thought we should, we're losing in some places. In one year, we had turned that around. We are now making money. We were able to put money away into an account that helps us pay for projects that come up at Chamonix. The other big project that we did was the reconstruction of the Bunker Wave Pool. That pool had been out there for 30 years. It was breaking down in certain areas. We got that fixed. We got that fixed during the pandemic shutdown, so we did not have to lose a year completely. We actually did a rework of the whole place, and now it is making money for us. Residents expect us to address these issues, and that's why I'm running for another term. I was mayor of Andover for 14 years, so I have the experience in my background that along with being in the private sector, working for General Mills for 40 years. These are the tough decisions that we have to make, and I need, and I can make them for you.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
In the next few years, the Highway 10 project will finally be completed, and this has been one of our top priorities for well over a decade. So my immediate goals for the county was be to continue the work that we have begun with the city of Blaine, Mindott, our local representatives, and our congressional representatives in Washington DC to do the Highway 65 project, the freeway project between Highway 610 all the way up to Main Street. This will be a big project, and it is our top transportation project. There are others in the area. Highway 610 needs access off of East River Road. That was promised to Anoka County, and the city of Coon Rapids is working on that, and I'm going to help them do that. We must also address our staffing issues, which every business across the county deals with every day. The plan we have proposed will help fill vacancies and prepare the county for retirements that are right around the corner. As the Chair of the Information Technology Committee, I have been focusing on cybersecurity and was recently appointed to a task force, statewide task force on that project for cybersecurity, and I want to work together with our fellow counties to protect our future.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
My goals for the future of Anoka County is to support public safety, mental health services, and transportation. Public safety covers many areas, and my top concerns are response times for police and fire, along with recruitment, training, and retention of employees. Mental health services need to grow to maintain pace with the growing population. Focusing funds on county roads and obtaining funds for highways are more important than funding the North Star train. Busing is a fiscally responsible option for residents as an alternative to the North Star train. Safe highways, arteries, and roads are essential for residents as development occurs. And another goal I have, I would really look forward to working with our newly elected sheriff and county attorney, and will collaborate effectively with them to ensure Anoka County remains a safe, strong place for people to live, work, and raise families.
And now, questions that came from the public via our website, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to these questions. Beginning with you, candidate Strombeck, what processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public?
Thank you, Leslie. One thing I can think of right off the top of my head would be for residents to go to the Anoka County website under AnokaCountyMinnesota.gov. It lists all kinds of things residents can subscribe to per their choice, just to name a few off. It's Anoka County Legislative Updates, Anoka County Newsletter, the recycling programs, construction alerts, to social services, to airport committees, all kinds, I mean, it, there's so many listed that if residents would just go to that website, that would be a great source for them to use. And information can be obtained by the Freedom of Information Act, the FOIA as well. There's regular meeting notices and information about public meetings that are held and for, and for what to know as a resident. Information should be accessible and not withheld, but with that being said, it does take staff lots of time to make information available, and I'm open to hear from residents if they are unable to access that information to find alternative ways to do so for them.
Candidate Gamash, what processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public?
Well, one of the things that when I became, when I went from being a mayor to a county commissioner was the fact that we didn't have a public portion of our county board meetings, which I think is vitally important that we should add, and I began that process early to suggest that we do something like that. We've decided not to, but what we have added in that timeframe was to allow for public comment at every one of our committee meetings. So if you're at a committee meeting, Parks Committee, IT Committee, maybe it's Finance Committee, you can ask questions, a two-minute timeframe to ask questions. We might not get the answers to you right away, but at least it gives you the opportunity to ask questions about important things that are before that committee. So that has been a good step in the right direction. We do have a great website that we continue to update all the time to make sure that that information's out there, and you can find everything about your park system and everything else, but, so that information is out there. We just need to be a little bit more open about what we talk about at our committee meetings and possibly at board meetings as well.
And this next question, we'll start with you, candidate Gamash. Our parks support wildlife habitat, provide natural areas, and are important to residents' quality of life. What is the role of the county in ensuring the quality of our parks is maintained?
I chair the Parks Committee, so I know a lot about our park system, and it was important to me, and I was glad to be able to chair it. We have seven regional parks within Anoka County. We have two conservation areas, six county parks, and one nature area, and that includes the Worgo Nature Center out in, near Centerville. So that's vitally important that we continue to do that. There are campgrounds at our parks that people may not even know about. I know when I became a county commissioner, I wasn't quite aware that we had these nice parks, or these nice campgrounds right in our parks, and they are full all summer long and into the fall. The one in Bunker Hills doesn't close till about two weeks from now, so you can still get fall camping in. But those are vital to our way of life, and in the last two years since the pandemic, we have seen numbers just go right through the roof, and it's been great. We are continually updating, changing of trails and everything so that people can get in and out, make it a safe, fun time, and get out and use your park system.
Thank you. And candidate Strombeck, our parks support wildlife habitat, provide natural areas, and are important to residents' quality of life. What is the role of the county in ensuring the quality of our parks is maintained?
Well, I think it would be similar to that of a city, and when you maintain a park, you have to mow the grasses, take care of the habitat, and also keep the parks' trails that are located within each park system maintained. Because I grew up in Andover, Bunker, Bunker Hills was always a fantastic park to go to, and like Commissioner Gamash said, it is a great place for people to camp, but it's also a great place for people just to go during the day. You can bring your kayak, and you can, you can actually kayak through some parks, not at Bunker, but at some other ones. You can actually grab your, what's it, I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss for my words. If you hook them between, between the trees. Hammock, thank you. You can, you know, you can just grab a book and grab a hammock. You can ride your bike through them. Parks are essential, especially during pandemics. My favorite part of parks are trails, which unfortunately are also the most expensive. Open space parks are generally my favorite. Passive spaces are just as important as active spaces.
Thank you. This next question, we'll begin with you, candidate Strombeck. What changes, if any, do you think should be made to Anoka County election process?
Well, as an, as a head election judge, everything so far has worked out in my favor, whether I'm a head judge, an assistant judge, or a regular judge, either at the city or county level. Fortunately, I haven't had too many issues, but one thing that I would want to maybe audit would be absentee ballots in general versus just, I know the county right now takes about three random precincts and audits them, but as an election judge, I know that when you fill out your paperwork, generally your ballots counts are going to match your ballot counter, and everything actually is, is in order because we have produced those paperworks as we go throughout the day. At this point in time, though, there's really a lot of groups that like to, I don't, poke holes in the integrity system, so I would love to have a voice at that table and ensure residents that our processes are followed and our staff is, is very capable and the election system in Anoka County is very safe and very secure.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure.
What changes, if any, do you think should be made to Anoka County's election process?
Thank you. I have taken an oath to uphold the constitutions of both the United States of America and the state, and the state of Minnesota, 10 times as a public servant and multiple times as a member of state boards. It is an oath I do not take lightly and proudly upheld. Election integrity is woven into the fabric of the Constitution. Election security is something that has always been a priority. We have very committed and highly experienced staff to make sure that the voting process in Anoka County is fair, honest, and secure. I'm extremely proud of what the team has done during these very challenging times. The volunteer election judges, the observers, and also committed, have, are also committed and dedicated to the election integrity in Anoka County. As a county commissioner, I have participated in and approved the certification, certification of elections, and I can unequivocally say that I have trust in our process.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, do you support replacing the current county jail and parking ramp with a bigger jail and parking ramp spilling over the original footprint? Do you see an alternative?
The need for a new jail has been discussed with us going back to 2016 on the county board, and that came from the sheriff, and we have had many discussions since then. So there is a need for a new jail. Our old, our jail is used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It, it just builds up every year, and making improvements, well, it's way beyond making improvements. So we do need a new jail. We have had discussions with the city of Anoka. I think we have a pretty good plan. I understand some of their concerns. We're going to continue negotiating with the city of Anoka to find out what we can do to get to that point, but it makes sense to have it in the city of Anoka, in the area that we have it in now because everybody is used to having a jail there. If you start thinking about moving it out towards the Anoka High School or some other place, you're going to have more problems with residents in those areas. They're not used to having a jail, and we need a jail near the courthouse.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, do you support replacing the current county jail and parking ramp with a bigger jail and parking ramp spilling over the original footprint? Do you see an alternative?
I do support the building of a new jail for many reasons. We have 21 cities in our county. Some are fully developed, some are not, and with our growing population, especially with mental health crises on the rise, I know our jail is already at capacity. I absolutely support staying in the county seat because that's actually required by law. It needs to stay in the county seat. I would love to have discussions and collaborate with officials from the city of Anoka to find a solution that would be beneficial for everybody. I also feel that the staff, not the staff, I'm sorry, the jail is absolutely in need of a makeover. It, it simply doesn't serve the needs, and going forward, we need to find a solution that will, that will be appropriate for our growing population and the development around the areas that are developing still.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, what are you going to do to get reliable, quality internet to all areas of the county?
Well, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not the most techie human on the planet. I do know that that is an issue for rural lying areas in our county. I, I'm assuming that Excel, Canexus Energy, and these places are going to come up with some solutions for these people so they can get wired in. I know personally, a friend of mine has 40 acres in Andover, and she still can't get high-def internet, so I, I would love to be a voice at the table to explore solutions for residents to have that. That's a need, and it's not a want anymore in this day and age.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, what are you going to do to get reliable, quality internet to all areas of the county?
We have been working on this now for a number of years. We've, we have a broadband plan that gets it to all the areas, especially to the north of us. That's where the main issues arise, and obviously during the COVID pandemic, we had issues with students being at home and not being able to access the internet. So we have started to use dollars that we receive from the federal government through ARPA. We spread some of those dollars out to individual cities. We started focusing mainly on the cities in need and other cities that Fridley, the Columbia Heights, places like that that have better internet services already. We, we kind of used some of that money to move to other areas that were in much more need, and that's, that's a big part. We need to have this taken care of, and we need to fix it. So we'll use money, as much money as we can get from the federal government, or if the state's providing it, we'll find those dollars, but we also need to put some money in from the county as well to make sure we service these, these areas of our, of our county.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, would you work with other board members to see that county residents can have an opportunity to speak at regular board meetings, as is common practice in school districts, many cities, and other metro counties?
Yes, I, as I mentioned earlier, I did start that from the beginning. I can understand the idea that it's, we're more like a state legislature where you, once you're in session, you don't have these types of discussions, but as a mayor, we would do this all the time. You would have controversial subjects that would come up, and you'd make sure that you get the, give the people the opportunity to speak, get it off their chest, let them, let them have their word, and I think that is important. So I appreciated the fact that with the county board's help, we all decided that we would have these moments, these public moments at our, at our committee meetings, and if you're invited to come to any committee and ask a question about issues that are on there, that's important. That gives you an opportunity to express yourself. Just the last Tuesday at the Parks Committee, we had residents from the Center, Lake, the Lake Association at Centerville Lake come in and talk about blue algae, and it was a great discussion. It caught, took us about an hour, but we got some good information, and we're going to move forward and trying to help them out, and that, that's the kind of back and forth that the county board needs.
Thank you. And candidate Strombeck, would you work with other board members to see that county residents can have an opportunity to speak at regular board meetings, as is common practice in school districts, many cities, and other metro counties?
For the most part, I'm going to say yes. I, I'm going to say yes with, with some, some caveats. I think there would need to be a time limit, maybe a two to three minute per person, and being a Park and Rec Commissioner and also at many city and local city council meetings, there's some, if, if the groups of people are repetitive and, and if they keep coming in and saying the same thing and don't have anything new to add, I would maybe request an alternative at that point. But in terms of random general public speaking about something they want to speak about, I think that's absolutely fine within a reasonable time limit.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, Anoka County requires a fee be paid to enter parks in a vehicle. This creates barriers for those on limited income to access a county resource. What ideas do you have for making county parks more accessible to all?
Well, there could be a subsidy for residents that would meet certain requirements where they could possibly get a free, a park pass that, that they could get at county expense that would be under a subsidy. I personally buy park passes myself. I absolutely love them. I think parks should be accessible to all people regardless of income or regardless of if they own a vehicle or not, and if there's trouble with that, there are subsidies available and dollars for that.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, Anoka County requires a fee be paid to enter parks in a vehicle. This creates a barrier for those with limited income to access county parks as a resource. What ideas do you have for making county parks more accessible?
The fees that are charged are only at the regional parks, and that is done to help supplement all the work that goes into some of what happens at the regional parks and the staff that we have working there daily. So in the other parks, you have six county parks that are across from Columbus to Fridley to Columbia Heights and St. Francis. There's six of them, and, and there's no charge to get into those. There's no charge to get into the nat, natural area. There's no charge to get into conservation areas. So it is just those. We do offer for veterans a free pass to get into the parks, so we have, we have done that, but you'll find that most of your regional parks within the metropolitan area will charge a fee to get in. That's kind of, that's similar to what you would find at state parks because regional parks are very similar to state parks. We have looked at possibilities of reducing fees from time to time, but it would be a, it would be a big cost, but there are regional, there are other parks within our system that are very good parks that are free to the public.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, how will you balance keeping taxes down with rising market salaries for sheriffs, county attorneys, and other county employees?
That's the part of what we had, have had a long discussion on this year, and again, I want to remind everybody that our 2023 levy is going to be zero increase. We are going to use other dollars that we have had available to us, some of our ARPA dollars for different projects, and we are also using some of our asset preservation money that's been saved away because our employees are a huge asset, and that's why we're using those dollars to help us with this project on salaries that we're, we have been working on. It's vital to us to get that project done. It's probably going to be a two- to three-year project, and that should, that should help us retain employees, fill some of our vacancies, and then look to the retirement that's coming. And we have a number of people that are at those ages of going to be retiring soon. So that's what we're doing here right now, and we've been doing it for the last three years prior to this as we kept the levy at zero.
And candidate Strombeck, how will you balance keeping taxes down with rising market salaries for sheriffs, county attorneys, and other county employees?
Well, being that I'm not an incumbent, I don't have the vast wealth of knowledge that my, that Mike has about that. I do know that Anoka County has some catching up to do in terms of market rates. I know that there's a proposed 10.3 million right now for non-union workers to get up to par, and I would much rather get my foot in the door and have a little bit more resources at my fingertips before furthering, further answering, and because I'm not an incumbent, I have not sat at the table. I have bits and pieces of information, but I do think it's imperative that employees in the workforce are retained and paid fairly at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, what processes can you think of that would strengthen working relationships between Anoka County and the Met Council?
First of all, I'm going to be pretty, make it kind of clear that I'm, I'm not a huge Met Council support fan. I believe that there should be some elected officials onto Met Council because they're an appointed body with no oversight, so I, so working with them with other bodies can become an issue. I do, however, believe that communication is important with them, and the only way to find solutions is by communicating with them, and I think that's going to be my answer.
All right. Candidate Gamash, what processes can you think of that would strengthen working relationships between Anoka County and the Met Council?
The communication part is, is huge. We need to do this a lot more than, than we currently do. We, the, as a, as a mayor, I was much more involved in, in dealing with the Met Council through League of Minnesota Cities, places like that, because that's, you were doing that on a day, on a yearly basis with the Met Council. It was very important for your development and, and your comp plans and things like that. In the county, it's a little less, but we do still have to have a better relationship than we do. The North Star line is our main issue that we have with that, and during the pandemic, as everybody knows, the North Star has been reduced to its running. That has helped us reduce how much we're paying them, and that I thought was a good plan. That was the best way to do it. If you're not running the same amount of trains, the county should not be paying the same amount for less rides. So, and again, it's too bad that we didn't run trains during the Twins games, but that wasn't our doing, that was more the Met Council's doing, so I'm not going to take the blame for that one. But we need to communicate better, and we need to communicate more with them.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash.
Yes.
How can commissioners and the sheriff's department and other Anoka departments work together to increase public safety in Anoka County?
I've been fortunate enough to, as mayor, when I was there, to work with the Anoka County Sheriff's Department as our police force, and I found that very interesting, and I really enjoyed the work that we did. If you're constantly involved with what the sheriff's department does, you can express your concerns about issues, and, and we had issues where people would come in and, and talk to us a little bit about some things they didn't think were quite right, and the sheriff's always, the sheriff's office under different sheriffs even, sheriffs do it currently, but even past sheriffs, always were there, and they always seemed to take care of the problem whenever the city had an issue like that, and I really appreciated that, and I've worked with them. I've worked with a number of sheriffs since I've been mayor and also with the county, on the county board, and I look forward to continuing that close work with them. They have a great staff, they have great, great people. It's a tough job, but you have to make sure that you understand their side and then also understand the side of the residents that are having issues, but if you communicate, that usually takes care of most of the problems, and that's what I'll continue to do.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, how can commissioners and the sheriff's department and other Anoka departments work together to increase public safety in Anoka County?
I think the, the joint committees that are formed currently are a big help. I think that buy-ins are necessary between the county board, the sheriff's office, and the county attorney's office on many levels. I know that with the two new candidates running for both sheriff and county attorney, it would be a fantastic opportunity for somebody like myself to have a new voice at that table as well. I think, I, I mean, I've just, my feedback I've received has been, there needs just to be some changes in general with all three, you know, in, with the existing relationships between all three. I also feel that the county board could maybe approve, like an off-site, some of the, like, the, what is, the, the Anoka County Metro Regional Jail, the, the workhouse, could actually maybe have like a remote, some sort of remote, remote courthouse, which would help alleviate transportation costs. I have some ideas that I could bring to the table once I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Strombeck, the metro area League of Women Voters conducted a survey and learned Anoka is one is the only metro county that doesn't seek citizen input on policy, major capital projects. capital projects, or budget priorities. Do you think citizen input is important in county government?
Yes, I think that for big CIP projects, I think that those residents that live nearby should have like maybe a survey or something to that nature sent to them to provide feedback for whatever capital improvement project or whatever change and/or new thing is going to go in. I think resident, we actually work for residents, and I really want to stress that in every facet I've held, the people are who I work for all the time, so I think it's really important that their voices are heard if they need to express their opinion for something that affects their tax base.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, the metro area League of Women Voters conducted a survey and learned Anoka is the only metro county that doesn't seek citizen input on policy, major capital projects, or budget priorities. Do you think citizen input is important in county government?
It definitely is, and we actually have a few different boards that, where we appoint residents to. There's a community corrections board, there's a health services advisory board, there's the library board. So we do have some areas where we will do that. Now, when you're talking about budgets and you're talking about those types of things, again, we've opened up committee meetings so that you can get an opportunity to ask questions at those committee meetings. That includes our finance committee, that includes our building committee, that includes every public committee that we have, which is all open to the public. So that's, the opportunity is there. Should we have more of community, or like our community corrections advisory board, which I sit on? I think we should. I think we should maybe look at that, expanding that out to other types of committees that might be focusing on budgets. Maybe they're focusing on other aspects of a building or something. That might be a good idea to start saying, we'll appoint some people from the public to help us in advisory roles on these advisory boards. I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. Candidate Gamash, what do you see as the future of public transportation in District Five and in the county overall?
Public transportation. I think it's buses for the most part. We've got a number of routes that are being discussed, similar to what's gone through in Dakota County, and I think there's some real opportunities there, especially through Blaine on 65 when the completion of the freeway project is done. That would be a good opportunity for us to look at. I was really concerned by the fact that I was recently at the, going to a medical appointment in Blaine where I went past the parking garage, not a parking garage, but a big parking ramp that they have in Blaine that is empty. No one's using it, and that is, that's a little shocking. I didn't quite believe, I knew the pandemic was bad, but I didn't quite believe that there was nobody getting on that parking, in that parking garage to go down to the Twin Cities. So that we have to consider, and that's been the issue that we've had now with North Star. How many people are going to go back down to the Twin Cities for work just because of the fact that most businesses can work from home? So we have to take that into account.
Thank you. Candidate Strombeck, what do you see as the future of public transportation in District Five and in the county overall?
Buses would be my absolute choice. I would have a hard time throwing taxpayer dollars into the North Star that currently runs three to four trains a day, and I certainly am not in support of extending that up to St. Cloud. Those tax dollars could be used so much better, and I think the future of public transportation also means really great, safe highways and roads and arteries in county roads for our citizens as everything does develop. It's really important that as communities do develop, that the current roads are maintained as well, and safety precautions are taken for those that travel to and from, whether it's by bus or by their own personal vehicle.
Thank you. And so that ends or wraps up the questions submitted by the public. So now it's time for our closing statements, and for the closing statements, each candidate will have one minute, and this will be in reverse starting order, so we'll start with you, candidate Gamash, if you'd like to go ahead with your closing statement.
Thank you, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and for this event tonight. To the voters, we have redistricted the entire county, but District Five has gone from having Fridley, parts of Columbia, parts of Coon Rapids, and parts of Andover to now having less of Coon Rapids, more of Andover, and a precinct in Oak Grove. So I'm out there, door knocking to try to get to know the people in the area that I haven't been around for a while, and give us some time to get out there because it takes some time to get to your house hopefully, but I'll try to get there. I really appreciated the last eight years as a county commissioner for some of you, and I really would appreciate another term. It's only going to be a two-year term because of this redistricting, but I'm fine with that, and there's a lot of work that we can still get done, and I've enjoyed working with the current board that we have, and we look forward to continuing that if you would kindly vote for me in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And candidate Strombeck, if you'd like to go ahead with your closing statement?
Thank you. This is my first campaign ever. I am an appointed government official. I am not an elected government official. With that being said, I've went to many new community events, and it would be my pleasure to meet all the residents that I haven't met yet. I have met some community leaders who said it would be absolutely fantastic to have commissioners come to their public events, and for me, votes are sacred and they're important, and I am looking to serve the people that I, the areas and some of which I've grown up in. Coon Rapids is not as familiar to me, so I would love to get to know that on a much different level. I will make myself available. I will make myself extremely visible in the community. Other than that, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters. I want to thank everybody for their time and patience dealing with elections, and please vote for the candidate that best suits your abilities and your values and your morals, and I hope to have your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, both candidates, for running for Anoka County Commissioner, District Five, and for being a part of the democratic process by running for office, being here this evening, and being willing to serve your community. Thank you also, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. We hope that this forum has helped you to make an informed decision, and as we move through the election season, link to all of our local election forums at lvvabcn.org. If you have questions left unanswered by the forum, please contact the candidates directly. To register to vote or update your registration, go online to mnvotes.gov. You can also register when you go to vote, but there are a lot of races on this year's ballot, and redistricting has taken place. So if you're unsure where to vote, or if you want to preview what will be on the ballot, you can also go to mnvotes.gov. When you vote, you participate in our democracy. You make it stronger, and you make it yours. Vote on or before November 8th. Thank you.